This program is brought to you by Newsworks in cooperation with the Eau Claire Area School Board. This program is simulcast on WRFPLP 101.9 FM.
Three eleven academic freedom. Revised policy three thirty curriculum development and evaluation. And revised policy three eighty-one teaching about controversial issues. Can I have a motion to adopt all except for seven point four? Seven point seven, seven point nine, and seven point eleven. So moved by Commissioner Duax. Do I have a second?
Second.
So moved by Commissioner Fager. Can you take a roll call vote please Patty?
Commissioner Hamburg Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Harder?
Yes.
Commissioner Luganbill?
Yes.
Commissioner Vu?
Yes.
Commissioner Torres?
Yes.
Commissioner Duax?
Yes.
Commissioner Fager?
Yes.
Thanks everyone. I was the first to pull seven point four human resources employment report and I guess I've been looking at the employment report forever. I did before I was even on the board as part of our union. I have a question about all the additional FTE adding to overload and why the frequency of that has increased to such a degree that I'm not used to seeing. So that was my question.
Well, I can tell you that Catherine called today and we had a similar conversation. She asked about the additional, I mean, I think we indicated that there's ten staff members who have an overload in this report. Catherine and I spoke specifically about the music overloads and the fact that teachers aren't forced to take an overload, it's an option that they can choose. When we spoke specifically again about the music overloads, it was a point three divided up between three different buildings. And so to be able to post a point three music position, again, music teachers are challenging to find and so we're lucky when we can find high quality staff to come in at a one point oh. And so the idea of thinking we're going to bring in somebody at a point three to travel between three different buildings, the schedules don't drive up. And so usually it's about being able to create a sustainable position to hire somebody into and when it looks like there's just not an FTE to make that happen or it's just too inconsistent to make it plausible between buildings, then we approach our staff to see if they're interested in taking the overloads.
Can I have a follow-up question then?
Sure.
So then most, I mean, because I've seen it more frequent than I'm used to over the last several HR reports, so that's fine. So when people are asked to take an overload, I mean, it would appear by what I see on the HR report that most people are pretty amenable to that.
Yep, and building principals have great relationships with the folks in their buildings, so they know and sometimes it's a routine thing, like we're always going to have an overload of point two and so they might look to rotate that through so that's not always the same staff member who's taking an overload depending on, again, the position and the amount of people in the department.
And the overload is compensated?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's my question.
And one of the reasons I called is there were ten overloads and three of them were in middle school music and I just thought it was a red flag, so Kay explained it to me earlier.
Well, thank you. So I thought the board too, because we all see that, so thank you for following up on that. Do I vote on this separately now? So would someone like to move seven point four?
So moved.
So moved by Commissioner Luganbill. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Vu. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. That takes us to, we pulled seven point seven, that was Aaron, except equity committee report on donations.
Yeah, well, we've seen emails as board members, we've heard public comment questioning whether what we're achieving here is really equity or whether it's equality, some discussion about the differences between those things and in fact whether it's even equality I think came up. So not being an expert in these topics, not being in these discussions as deeply as some others on the board, I wanted to make sure we had a chance to talk through those and help make sure that this, these recommendations were all comfortable with.
Anyone else from the board have a comment? Commissioner Torres?
Yes, I would share concern about whether we have some kind of policy in place to determine whether or how funds donated to the school district or to any particular school that are not specifically designated could be equitably distributed amongst all schools.
Commissioner Duax?
If I understand the question, it's, if it's not designated for a particular, well, then the Public Schools Foundation will determine how to make it equitable and they give grants and so anybody can apply for those grants. So I think it's, it will be handled equitably. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have a concern? Commissioner Luganbill?
I mean, I think that they, their recommendation, which is eight point one, talks about the need to follow current policy eight forty and I think one of the issues that we faced was that that policy wasn't necessarily followed because not everybody was aware or, you know, equipped. Right, they weren't reporting. So I think if anything, it's making sure that there's proper education about that current policy on the books. I don't know if there's a need for a new one.
Commissioner Duax?
Well, I just, I just wanted to say that I, I realize on the surface it looks like this is not equitable, but in looking at all the records that we looked at supplied by the district, we felt like it was about as equitable as you could get without telling people what they can give to or what they should do in the booster clubs and so really we dug deep, but it's a, it's kind of a shallow topic. We don't want to discourage people from donating to their particular school or, you know, where their heart lies with their kids. And so we did limit it as we were instructed to just, to comment on the donations and how those were being done. And so it's really a description of what's going on. And we had lots of booster clubs and parent groups here to, they were afraid we were going to change something, so, but we didn't, we were just trying to collect information for you.
So can I clarify in the sense of donations, okay? I think we would have to dig deeper on the equity piece because I think some of the schools that have higher poverty rates also qualify for other title and, right? So that would offset it as well? I'm asking.
Well, every, lots of elementary schools have their particular project and Montessori got their playground equipment. Well, that looks like they get, they don't get that money every year, you know, it's like eighty-seven thousand dollars. Puddle Jump is a big fundraiser. They get it every year, so that, that might be questionable, but they need that funding for other things, so I think it's, it's kind of like leave well enough alone. But we did consider the definition of equality and equity and I want to just read a definition of those because we struggle with that. Equality indicates sameness, giving everyone the same thing, but equity is more about fairness in that access to the same opportunities and so we tried to, I see Josh sitting back there, he's my chair. Do you want to come up and say anything? So anyway, it's not that everybody's going to get the same thing, but everybody's going to have the same opportunities and I think that's an important distinction.
Thanks Josh. Josh, you want to just introduce yourself?
Yeah, I'm Josh Sterling, eighteen twenty, Eddie Lane, Eau Claire, Wisconsin. I was the chair of the Equity Review Committee. And I can echo what Catherine's saying, when we looked at it, one of the things we wanted to break down was things like equipment, things like computers, things like instruments, stuff like that. And what we found out was that even though those programs do get donations, the school board has already established a system in place now to make sure that every school has the same technology, that all the instruments in all the schools are replaced on a same schedule. And so when we look at it from those aspects, that, that is equitable and that's going to make sure that all the students have the same opportunities as everyone else in the classroom in their learning experience and what's really important. Where we were looking was outside of that. That was not what our purview was. Our purview was donations that parents go out and they raise money for a cause they're passionate about or something that they feel there's a need for in their school or something like that and they want that money to go towards that. And we, with input from the community from, really, I mean, if you want to take it from a high school side, we had groups from both high schools where parents came in and they were very vocal that, don't tell us that we can't give money to our programs that we're passionate about. You know, they both, the booster clubs at both schools felt passionate that they do a great job. They've, they even worked together on some events, sharing practices, different things like that. And so taking all that into consideration, we just didn't feel that there was a disparity in equity. Now, does that say that no one couldn't develop down the road? That's not to say that, but that's also why we recommended a review period pause in there as well.
Thanks Josh. Anyone else? I did like the fact that that was built in, that there was a, there's a common oversight. And I went to several of the meetings, sat in the background and listened to how the discussion even went on how schools could support each other. I mean, that came up over and over again, which was nice to hear. Anybody else? Commissioner Luganbill?
My understanding is we're going to talk more about this below as an individual item too, so I think we about covered this.
With the recommendations the committee has made.
Does someone want to call a question? I'll call the question.
So moved.
Okay. Would someone like to move then accept the equity committee report on donations?
So moved.
So moved by Commissioner Fager, second? Second by Commissioner Duax. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you. The next one for pulling was the ratification of the two thousand seventeen eighteen master agreement and that was, Joe?
Obstain.
Okay, so we'll take an individual, an individual vote on that Patty, okay?
Yep.
Oh, yep, somebody put it out there please.
Move approval?
Move approval by Commissioner Fager, second please?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Duax. Roll call Patty please.
Commissioner Hamburg Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Harder?
Yes.
Commissioner Luganbill?
Obstain.
Commissioner Vu?
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Commissioner Torres?
Yes.
Commissioner Duax?
Yes.
Commissioner Fager?
Yes.
Thank you everyone. That moves us to seven point eleven, the employee handbook modification and I pulled it just because I didn't know quite what the change was that was specified and I just really kind of wanted to know, so, okay, thanks.
Again, thank you to Commissioner Duax for giving me a call today. We had a great conversation. On page three of the updated version that you were provided this afternoon, under work schedules for administrative staff, you can see that in the grid labeled A. This is just the title of the positions that worked twelve months. We had brought this to you for the purpose of elementary principals and updating the fact that elementary principals would be part of the group above because of the fact that we changed their contracts this last go around. However, Catherine so pointedly informed me, she said, I don't think we have any of these positions anymore, director of such and such and such and such. And I said, well Catherine, you're exactly right. So I just checked to see if there's some kind of mix-up with an old schedule in this one and the bottom line is, no matter how many eyes look at something a hundred times thirteen different ways, you still miss things. So it's just title changes from what we did with the reorganization.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would someone like to move it forward please? I will. Moved by Catherine Duax. Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Fager. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Done with our consent resolution agenda. Thank you everyone. We also, before we go anywhere onto the individual considered resolutions, we also in approving our HR report, we have a new principal, so Dr. Hardbeck?
It's my pleasure to introduce the new principal of Sherman Elementary School, Kit Schuffelbahn. Kit, will you stand up? So I have a little blurb I have to read about you, so.
We want to read about you.
Kit, I think is completing her twenty-seventh year in the district. She began her career with the Eau Claire Area School District in nineteen ninety as a physical education teacher at South Middle School until she transferred to North Star Middle School in nineteen ninety-five when the school opened. So you kind of came with the school?
I did.
Kit continued to teach FIED throughout the secondary schools in the district until twenty twelve when she became the interim assistant principal at North Star and then was appointed to be the assistant principal in twenty thirteen. She has a long coaching career in the school district. She received her bachelor's degree from UW Eau Claire and her master's degree from Winona State University. She is a national board certified teacher and she obtained that certification in November of twenty twelve. So we are looking forward to your leadership at Sherman and expecting to continue to see the success that Sherman has achieved thus far and we know that they are, you know, have been kind of waiting very anxiously for your appointment to be announced, so congratulations. You have your supporters there on the front row, so congratulations Kit.
I know how it's going from middle school to elementary.
It's gonna be great.
That takes us to our individually considered resolutions. Now, we did do the consent agenda on accepting the report from the Equity Committee. This is going to get a little bit more specific in the conversation that we've already started. So Abby, you're on this one as far as the information goes, but we pulled out the recommendations for the board so that we could pass this with additional conversation if we needed to. So Joe, Commissioner Luganbill?
Yeah, my only question, because I support all of these, my only question is, once we pass it, what we do with it? My suggestion is that we do some sort of an equity commitments sheet where we take this, but wordsmith the sentences a little bit that it's, it's the district's commitment moving forward and have that sent out to the families. So I would actually probably put that in the motion, that that's what we, you know, we pass it and we send it out to families.
Dr. Hardbeck?
So one suggestion that I might have is that since this, these recommendations came in terms of gifts and donations to the district, that we incorporate these recommendations into the rules so that they're specifically stated and we can work on that as a staff and then send them to you for your review.
Would someone like to make that motion? Can we make the motion from here?
I move.
Go ahead.
I move that recommendations one through six of the Equity Review Committee are incorporated in our district's policies and rules.
Do I have a second? Second from Commissioner Duax. Can we, any, any other input? Can we take a vote on that then Patty, please?
Commissioner Hamburg Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Harder?
Yes.
Commissioner Luganbill?
Yes.
Commissioner Torres?
Yes.
Commissioner Vu?
Yes.
Commissioner Duax?
Yes.
Commissioner Fager?
Yes.
Thank you everyone. Then that takes us to our committee reports and items for discussion and the first one up are the recommendations about the boundary changes from demographic trends in the facility planning committee. This is specific to the proposed timeline for the boundary changes and we were given that information ahead of time. Is anybody going to speak to those? Dr. Hardbeck?
So in, in your last meeting, you received the recommendations from the demographic trends and facilities committee in terms of the boundary changes and at that time you had very little discussion about whether or not you thought the boundary suggestions and boundary changes that they were proposing were acceptable to you, how you might communicate that to the community at large. And basically, you, you really have two options or maybe three. One is to vote to accept their recommendations and to do so by the next meeting. The other thing is to give opportunities to have information sessions within the community and we were asked to develop by the board, by the agenda setting committee, a timeline for that and how that communication plan might roll out and we have done that and we're prepared to share that with you tonight. Or you might create your own timeline.
I write things down, that's how I internalize them, so sorry, it takes me some time to write things down. Any input from the board?
I want to first thank the members of the demographics and trends committee for this year for what I think is an extraordinarily thorough examination of data that was used to make these decisions. This is a topic I realized that has some emotion attached and it has some expectations and it has some sensitivity, but I think it's a topic that's been discussed for a long time. This is not something that was new to demo and trends this year. And I think it's important at this juncture to decide however we choose to go forward that the data that were included are fairly significant. First of all, financial information was considered and that included increased or potential busing costs, et cetera, and that was a, an important piece of information that we gathered that also involved the busing company attending a demo and trends meeting. Secondly, we used the city's natural geography for a boundary decision and we also had a geographer on the committee to provide some of that information. And we also looked at things that made a lot of sense to, to the community in terms of the city's potential for growth. As you're all aware, we can't go grow north because that's Chippewa Falls, we can't go east because that is Altoona, so the changes that will occur in demographics in Eau Claire will be south and west, which, you know, those are all factual pieces of information. And I think it's important for those pieces of information to be shared with all the members of the board who weren't privy to the demo and trends committee as Commissioner Luganbill and I were privy to. And, but I think it's really important to know that this data was used to make an informed decision. This was not a decision, a recommendation, excuse me, not a decision, a recommendation from the committee that was made based on data. And I think that that was something that I really want to make clear, that we were trying to make a really equitable, to use Commissioner Duax's language, decision about the children in our district. Also, another important piece is the common curriculum that is shared by both North and Memorial High Schools. This is, this is something that perhaps some people are also not aware of, that it's an identical curriculum between the two schools and all, the offerings are identical. They use the same curriculum guide and the same course offerings. How it's delivered may look differently, but those are the same kinds of experiences that we, we want all children in the district to have post-secondary success. I think that's the most critical element of all and to try and make sure that all children are privileged in a way that they have the opportunity to be successful contributing members of this community. And I really want to personally, my opinion is that we should go forward with changing the boundaries and to hold listening sessions to talk about ways to make this transition for some children as positive and exciting and thrilling as it possibly can be without spending a lot of time delaying. I'm in higher education and we spend an inordinate amount of time of planning to plan and I think we've done the planning to plan piece, let's plan to do.
Thank you Commissioner Fager. Anyone else? I guess I can, yeah. I appreciated the time, energy, facts, data that the committee provided, but Commissioner Fager, you did say that the same, what, something you may not be aware of is the same curriculum course offerings are offered at both high schools. And I think from what I have been contacted as a board member over since our last meeting by many people who were not aware, and that's the piece for me, that I feel we need to take the time like we did with the referendum and connect deeply with our community on this because I'm really thinking this is even a deeper connection than the referendum in some respects because money is one thing, kids are much more precious and families are much more important. What I would like to say is that it, it, it isn't going to be listening sessions, these are going to be information sessions and then I would like someone to explain the timeline. Information sessions with questions and answers so that our community will be aware and come into this at a, at a different level. I, I remember the referendum, there were so many times we talked with our own staff in our, in our schools and they were not aware of the budget or funding or the things that we really needed people to know about. And we continue to build trust with our community and I think not taking a big amount of time, but time to make those connections with our community is important to me, so I just wanted to say that. Commissioner Luganbill?
Yeah, well, as a member of this committee, I have seen firsthand the kind of work and dedication of the committee members and as Commissioner Fager mentioned, we have just about every type of representative on that committee, a geographer, we have a realtor, we have all sorts of folks who bring various perspectives, parents from both sides of the district. So I really, I really value what we did as a committee. And what we're doing now as a board is, in essence, we are the first board in fifty-five years that is willing to do this, that is willing to make a change. I don't think anyone on the board, and I don't want to speak for anyone, I don't think anyone on the board wants to do nothing, okay? And I certainly think that the recommendation, it seemed to me at the last meeting, like folks want to move forward, especially with equity in mind. I think the question is going to be how we go about doing it. I had the chance to read the schedule that Catherine and Mary Ann and Chris had worked out and probably others behind the scenes in the Friday letter and then on board docs from agenda setting. I am completely in support of it. I think that to have a built-in timeline with information and Q and A sessions built in and a date where everyone knows to get started, I think that we not only have to provide an opportunity though for folks to ask basic questions about what we're going to do, but also I think we need to provide time for the staff to develop the, the tools that they need so that by the start of the school year, we're ready to rock and roll. I do think, you know, some of the comments that were shared at the start of this meeting were frankly embarrassing and sometimes offensive, but many of them rung a lot of true chords for me. And I think the main, the main tone that was brought up and the main theme that was And I think the main tone that was brought up, and the main theme that was brought up was folks didn't, they kind of felt blindsided. I can understand where they're coming from, but really, this meeting is the first time that we're talking about what that communication looks like. I'm not sure what kind of a communication households would have received from us prior to night if we were to do it. The board might potentially maybe do something if they vote for it. The board has never done that in the history of this district, and that's sloppy. And so, you know, I think that we need to have the built-in communications. We need to put a high priority on communicating electronically and via US mail letters to every single household that will be impacted. Make the effort of the information and Q and A sessions if we have to, if we, you know, going directly, not only within schools, but to the neighborhood associations, making sure that everybody has the opportunity to speak with us directly and ask questions and receive information. So, I'm very much in support of moving forward with the timeline as proposed, with the built-in opportunities for civic engagement. And that's basically, I think, we've checked just about every box when we talk about this proposal, except maybe entirely that. We've had some of that, but I think we can do more of it. And I think as a democratically elected body, we owe that. So, I really am in strong support of the current proposed timeline with the built-in sessions.
Commissioner Torres?
Thank you to the committee for their report. I would appreciate to have the opportunity to read, actually, a written report. I think that that piece would provide all the information that the community will need to understand the move, and will be more educational for everyone involved.
Commissioner Torres, what you mean by that, too, is a written report in addition to the PowerPoint?
Yes, that's what I mean.
Thank you. Any, Commissioner Duhax?
Yes, I agree with Commissioners Fager and Luganville. My children went to North High School, they had an excellent education, and I never felt like we were deprived of anything, and they didn't either. And I think the boundaries look logical, but I would appreciate a comment about the Title I schools if that was discussed. I know Wendy Sue Johnson briefly touched on it, but I just wondered if you would have anything to add to that. And then I have a question for Mr. Liebham.
Sure, I can comment on the Title I schools. We did not discuss Title I schools. We did talk a lot about free and reduced and socioeconomic conditions, and how would that affect the move. If the goal was to balance enrollments, that socioeconomic piece kind of fell to the bottom of our list because you can't do both. And so, the committee, I think, really decided that they really wanted to balance enrollments because the schools themselves have done everything that they can do within their power to make programming and things look alike. And so, that's why it came back to the board with the recommendation of let's balance enrollments. So, we didn't get into the Title I discussion.
Well, I, I, I'm sorry. I want to commend this plan because as I've sat on the board, this is my ninth year, everything that comes up about the two high schools, it always just seems like North gets the short end of the stick because they have less students. We can be even more equitable if they have more similar enrollments. And so, that seems very clear to me. Did you want to say something before I ask my question?
I wanted to address the Title I piece also, if that's okay with you. I want to thank Abby, you articulated exactly that. We tried to, we were juggling the data, so to speak, the financial information, the enrollment information, the logical demographic shift, and based on the geography of this community and where the potential growth was happening. And we decided to choose fiscal responsibility in terms of busing over the looking at the free-reduced, Abby is correct, we did not look at Title I, but we did look at the numbers of free and reduced to look at that. That was the, that was the data point that we discussed, and we had to balance out the equity in terms, or the equality, if you will, in terms of enrollment. And we had to make some tough decisions. And one of the decisions that we used as a major governing piece was the financial issue, to try and make, we're trying to be responsible to the district financially, and that was where we dealt with that particular issue.
Do you ask a question? Tim?
President Hambach-Boll, can I comment on Title I?
When we're done.
Okay.
Thanks, Wendy Sue. You'll, I'll open it up when we're all finished discussing.
I just wondered if you wanted to comment, Mr. Liebham, a little bit about the process of enrolling and getting the family, getting all that straightened out with the families, the process of moving to a new school, or is there, are there issues that you face?
Are you talking about siblings and grandfathering?
Siblings, yes.
Well, we did set some guidelines after the board voted to have all open enrollment families directed toward North High School for enrollment. So, we put those boundaries, those parameters together. And we could follow similar processes to transition affected families in those neighborhoods to North High School as well. Transitioning from enrolling in one of our elementary schools to a middle school, or a middle school to a high school, that won't cause a problem at all. It was referenced by one person, over time, as the numbers change, there will be some shifting in terms of shared staff for a period of time, but that will all balance out over the, you know, the course of time. So, there would be no significant hindrances for a family to enroll at North compared to Memorial.
I would, I would appreciate it at this time, Mary Ann, if you could go over the timeline, because that has not really been shared openly at the board meetings, so that we could kind of, Charles, oh, I'm sorry. I don't see your light, I gotta go like this, thank you. Charles?
My question is just for, asking for qualifications. I know that we did a thorough study, but we may, I don't recall the committee actually listening to communities. And if that did not happen, and now the plan is to have several listening sessions, how are the information from those sessions be incorporated to the recommendation for board's consideration? What role does the committee play with the information from this listening session?
There, from what we put together, and we can go through the timeline, they're not necessarily listening sessions, they're going to be information sessions for the information that was provided through committee, so that people could ask their questions and they can be answered by the information and data that was put together by the Demo Trends Committee. Yes, there might be things brought up relative to us answering questions or people having questions that may cause us to have some more discussion. I can't predict the future, but that's kind of how we thought about it. Meaning, it isn't really to get more information, it isn't really to change the recommendations so much of the committee unless we would have things talked about, or brought up, or questioned. I think people need their questions answered. And that's what we would be providing at this information session.
A follow-up discussion. So, we leave room with the potential that the board can resend the recommendation to the committee, which will delay further.
Go ahead, Aaron.
Yeah, I would say that's the implicit ramification of what we're discussing tonight, which is, do we vote on this? I think that's the key question. Do we vote on this next session, June 19th? Or do we follow the timeline recommendation, which is to vote on it in October? And implicitly, in that, putting it off to October, we're saying, yeah, there's room for us to do anything between now and October. I think we've also said there's a lot, there's a lot, it seems unlikely that much would change, given the amount of thought and time and effort that's gone into this. But that, by pushing off the vote, I mean, in any case, we're going to have informational sessions and Q and A sessions. I think the question really becomes, do we vote on the 19th, or do we vote in October? Do we set it in stone now, or do we leave it open for some possible changes by pushing it to October?
And there's a third one, is a third option between voting to accept the recommendations or the timeline, or we come up with something different, a different timeline, do it quicker. You know, that's out there, too, as well.
What would, what would doing it quicker look like? Where could we speed it up?
Can we, can we have the timeline so that we can kind of look at it that way?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, as Commissioner Carter pointed out, the key question is when you're going to hold your vote on this decision. Will it be in the next board meeting on June 19th, or will you extend your consideration through October? If you decide to go through October, these are the steps that we would recommend. Tonight, you're having the discussion about the boundary changes that were proposed to you by the committee. I would just point out that in that discussion, I don't know that you have thoroughly discussed the plan that they put to you in terms of those geographical boundaries. And that might be something that you want to discuss further. You would need to, if you decide not to vote next time, you would need to approve the steps and timeline leading up to your vote in October. Throughout the month of June, and we've already begun this work, creating a website, a banner, a question and answer sheet, a draft letter to send to families, just as we've done, just as we did with the referendum. It's a very kind of similar communication plan. By June 26, we would send a letter from me to all district families via Skyward, that would be by email, explaining the recommendations on the boundary changes, and including a link to the information session flyer that we have already developed. We would send a letter also to all affected families, and anyone who lived within that boundary area that would be changing, to notify them that a change is being considered. By early July and early August, we would send reminders and begin to promote the information sessions via social media, the website, we'd probably do some TV and radio appearances, again, as we used with our referendum model. We have tentatively scheduled and reserved space at Sherman and DeLonge in August, and also to, we will determine whether or not, and how, tours at North High School can take place for families who are not familiar with the school site. In September, there would be additional information sessions at DeLonge and Lake Shore, and again, some tours of North, and I think this would be to accommodate families who are maybe traveling throughout the summer. By September 25, we would ask the school board to review kind of summary feedback to date that we've received through the questions from the information sessions, and to see if there are any issues that need to be clarified before your vote is taken. Then you would vote on October 9. And then, we would start a transition plan if you vote to approve the, to the boundary changes, which would, again, include tours of North. And the North administration team would begin working with Memorial staff on a transition plan, and working with the middle schools as well. So, in order to communicate this, Patty, if you could just scroll down just a little bit. We have developed this communication plan, which consists of information and question and answer sessions, our media contacts, and our community outreach. And we are prepared to share, Patty, can you pull that flyer up? So, we have developed a flyer and kind of a logo, as we did with the referendum, so that you can, we have a communication tool. So, this is what the flyers would look like, that we would be distributing widely within the community. And you can see that there is a link to a website that we've begun to develop. Patty, are you able to pull that mock-up of the website? I think you're going to recognize this format. Very similar to what we had before. Well, there is a middle column that talks about some of the things that were in the committee's report, the why of the boundary changes, how they will take place, who will be affected. And then, there's a proposed boundary change map as well, that's there on the left, and what is in, outlined in yellow or gold is the part that would be carved out to go to North High School. Yes, it is an interactive one. And then, if people have questions or concerns, they can go to Your Voice, there's a direct link to that, to send their questions through Your Voice link. But on the other side, on the important information side, you'll see links to the flyer, the committee's recommendations, the maps, and the history of enrollment differences, and some of the frequently asked questions that we expect to get. So, that's, that is what we have developed so far for you.
Thank you, Dr. Harbeck. Any other questions from the board? I guess what I, I'd like to go from each board member, then, if they want to kind of speak to, because we need to kind of discuss what we're going to do at our next board meeting. Commissioner Luganville?
Yeah, well, thank you for showing us that. I really appreciate it, and I like it. I guess I wish that we could have a decision made as a board prior to the start of the school year, but I understand that we want to accommodate families on vacation. So, maybe that should be something that's communicated, as that's why, you know, we're putting those later dates to accommodate that, and that's also why we're pushing the vote in that way. Because, I mean, I think if we didn't have to accommodate that, I would prefer a vote in early September. But I get it. But I'm in support of it, and I would want to see the approval of the draft timeline on the June 19th agenda.
Commissioner Fager?
I too support changing the boundaries. I would like to see an earlier timeline in advance of school starting, because I think that's kind of how families operate, and we're making a huge assumption that everyone takes a vacation. And if we're talking about Title I and poverty, that sort of, sort of butts up against that. The other thing that I'd like to also mention is that while this is rectifying a, or hopefully working on a 55-year hopefully, working on a 55-year history, I, I think that this is a model that we need to think about as a board going forward, that we don't let another 55 years go by with a redistricting proposal, that at the very least, that the board adopts a policy to, to change or to review and to make boundary changes based on census every 10 years, because that's a normal, normal time period and a normal measurement period. And I'd like to see the board have a policy where changes occur at all levels, elementary, middle, and high school, in conjunction with census data, as soon as the census data are verified. I think that would make this a regular part of the way we do business in Eau Claire, and so we don't have to wait for 55 years, for the next 55 years, when I will be probably dead and gone.
Jennifer. Any other board members want to weigh in? Commissioner Vu, I see your light.
Thank you. I like to be bold that this topic is very sensitive and this topic, there's no right or wrong. It is about judgment-making and we have to be able to make a difficult decisions. I believe we had a committee, and still have that same committee, looked at it, and we looked at it for a whole, over 50 years, but more intensively the last year. So now we either follow the recommendation of the committee and vote yes in June 19, or go with the understanding that we want cooperation, we want to understand family, give them time to digest and ask for clarification. In that case, if we want to go with that route, if the voting in November 19 did not pass, then that means by default, we will listen to family, let them ask questions, and vote again, after some information were brought up to the committee for possible re-modification of the recommendation. And vote again. But, but I don't see how, why we need to wait so long after school start to vote again. We need to vote soon, but don't kid ourselves. This is a very difficult issue, it's just a matter of making our judgment. So my point is, A, we need to make a bold decision, because we already had a committee look over this for a long time. The only missing piece now is that the community in large may not have that input in the committee So if we were to trust our committee's judgment and our own judgment, vote yes on November 19. But if you're not comfortable at voting on the 19th, then say no and defer to the committee for informational sessions and bring back to vote again, but quick.
Anyone else? Commissioner Duex?
Not that I'm going to say anything profound, you understand, but I am ready to vote. And I, I know that there are, it's a very sensitive issue and I appreciate the issues that it brings to families. But I don't want to wait till October. I'd rather be closer to the beginning of school in September, but I will be gone on a foreign trip early August, and I think there's one other person that has that same situation. So August is not a good time. I'm going to miss one meeting, but not the second meeting. But I think if, depending on how you all feel, I don't see any point in waiting till October.
So I kind of, I hear, I'm just going to kind of summarize. I hear that people don't want to wait till October. Most people would like to have the information sent, information sessions and, and a vote taken earlier than October, which I agree with as well. I think October was a whole two months after. I thought we could do it, you know, the beginning of September or, so that would mean we'd have to kind of alter the timeline a little bit as well.
So what, excuse me. So one way you could alter the timeline is just to do away with the information sessions in September and continue to do your information sessions in early August with the idea that you would vote during that second meeting. And we would just move an information session into, from Lake Shore into August some, at some point. But we would need to know, you know, what date that is.
Commissioner Luganville?
So you're saying too, we would be able to vote the first meeting in September if we took out the August, I mean, took out the September sessions, we could vote the first meeting in September. I would, I would prefer that, and I also think, you know, the, the vacation piece, that's probably the one sticking point, but if this is something people are really feeling strongly about and they can't make it, they can also connect online. So we'll receive their comments, whether they're typed by someone taking minutes at the session or sent email to us, we're going to see them the same way.
And I think it is a reality that in the summer, people do scatter. And so whether they go on vacation or whether they're just not available, you know, you, you're going to have to factor that into your attendance, but at least you're, you know, would be offering those sessions.
Commissioner Fager?
So I, I guess I'm not clear on what are we voting on? Are we voting on to redistrict or are we voting on to how, hold Q and A sessions or vote? Or is it both?
I, I think what we're talking about right now is to either vote on the 19th as a choice, you know, or...
Vote on what?
A vote on the recommendations of the committee. Or we will vote on those, on the recommendations of the committee after we hold the information question and answer sessions. But we would like to move that closer to the beginning of school so that kids are aware when they start school where they would be going to high school.
And, and the date of the first meeting in September is September 11.
Commissioner Fager?
So, so I guess I'm, I'm kind of leaning toward what Charles, Commissioner Vu said, voting, voting on the 19th as a point of the recommendation to do the redistricting. And then the information sessions, Q and A sessions are helping with the process of making those, those changes. I, I guess I see that as sort of two separate issues that can be helpful, because I think that between Demo and Trends, the Parent Action Committee, and other groups that have heard this proposal for a number of years, that I think that that's what we have before us, is sort of that two, two-piece. If we chose to vote at our next meeting, that gives parents and others a long time to wrap their heads around things and then to be prepared to ask the kinds of questions that they have at the, the Q and A sessions, information sessions at a later date. That's just a, a thought.
So my comment to that would be, we would vote again, given what we experienced in the information session? I don't quite understand the comment about voting again.
So, so my interpretation of what Commissioner Vu said is that voting on the 19th to do the change, the Sherman and Lake Shore changes, that's one vote on the 19th. The next vote is to collect information from parents and affected parties on the process and what makes the most sense about the process at, at a, at a future meeting in September. That, that was, that's what I'm trying to get clarification on.
I don't...
Commissioner Harder?
I don't, if I may, I don't think, and I, if, I certainly wouldn't support the idea of a second vote, and I don't think that's what you were suggesting. I think you were suggesting, or let me stop trying to say what you're suggesting and say what I'm suggesting, which is, I think if we're going to vote on June 19th, if we choose to do that, it's an indication that we trust in the findings of this commit, the, the committee, that those findings are sound and that they are unlikely to be changed. As we go through our listening sessions, there is the possibility that some board members' minds will be changed on those recommendations. Should that possibility arise, the board does have the option to vote to change it, but it's a lot harder at that point. It's, a lot more things are already in motion if we voted yes on, on June 19th. But it is an option, should, should those listening sessions. I, I think it's really a matter of how, how much, you know, how confident do we feel as, as individual board members in this recommendation? If we feel very confident and we feel it's very unlikely to change, it really makes sense to vote on, on the 19th. On the other hand, if we want to make sure that the community feels the involvement in this process and that, you know, it's more than just optics to, to delay the vote until after the listening session. There are, there are real implications in terms of the ability to, to change the course of this and the simplicity of changing the course, whether we vote before or after those listening sessions, so.
Nicely said. Anyone else? Commissioner Luganville?
Yeah, I would, I agree with a lot of that. I think that, you know, this is the, I'm not necessarily concerned with board members second guessing their own opinions about this proposal. I think there's, there's pretty broad consensus that it's a sound proposal, at least with most board members. I think the main concern that I at least have is the civic engagement of the process. So I think that there, you know, there was a, a comparison made of this timeline to the start time timeline. But the difference that we can make here is that start time timeline had several built-in times where the board could either stop or keep going. Like there were, I think, two or three or maybe more. This is not including any of that. It's clear that there's a decision to be made on boundary change at the end of this process, which is a rather short process, it's the summer. And I think that there is a way that we can structure the timeline motion itself to, to I think, commit to a boundary change and structure it that the information, question and answer sessions are for us to, if we need to make changes to, to it, if there's something that we hear and we, I mean, there's, you know, a dozen of us at this table, there's, you know, 100,000 people in Eau Claire County, so maybe we'll hear something that we haven't heard yet. But I think it's important for us to at least provide that opportunity, but I think we can do it in a way that is still a commitment to the boundary change. So I would support structuring the timeline in a way that does really clearly outline for people, so not, because the last thing I want is for people to have to be worried this whole summer if the board is going to do it or not. I, I mean, we don't need to kid, we don't need to kid the community with that. I think that they deserve our honesty, that the board wants to commit to doing this, okay? I just think, to me, to be truly activating citizens and, and encouraging the democratic process, we need to structure it in a way that says, we want these sessions so that we can talk to you, we can provide you this presentation, the information, answer your questions, and you can provide us feedback. And then there is, there is no doubt in anyone's mind by the time that we vote as a board the first Monday in September, that we have heard the community, we have answered their questions, and we've heard every, every possible response we, we could get. And if they've had suggestions for us to improve it or tweak it, we've heard those too and maybe adapted something. But I think that's the best course moving forward.
Commissioner Torres?
Yeah, thank you. I would just say that I joined the board at a time when this conversation was already finished, and I have not had enough time to hear all the details that we're taking care of during those conversations. And I think that I personally would support any change that pays away for more equitable opportunities for all the children in the district. But I also recognize that this is a process that the community needs to be involved and that we need to help them understand the rationale behind this in a way that, you know, is more legitimate.
Thank you.
That's why I requested a written report.
And that's, that's part of the process too. So if we, at the next board meeting, we could vote on two choices. We could vote on taking the vote that night, you know, to make the vote, or we could vote for choice two, which would be the shortened timeline and get it done at the beginning, right at the beginning of school. Can we do it that way?
I think that's fair, and I guess... I think that's fair. As Commissioner Torres said, he needs some more time. And I think if we vote, we will have heard plenty in the next two weeks from the community. And that gives people time to make a decision.
So we'll have an option of, of two options that night to vote on. Okay. Sound good? Thank you very much. Community, Wendy Su? I didn't want to forget you.
Just on the Title I piece, I think Title I is just another way for measuring poverty rates, just like Free and Reduce. So I don't think we're talking about different things there, but we did talk about Title I, the impact on Title I that this would have. And North High School doesn't receive any Title I dollars, the district, you choose to use your Title I at the lower levels to try to intervene with students when they're young. So we did talk about the impact that it would have on Title I, which is nothing. And it's, I think, as a measurement, kind of on the flip side, it's, it's similar to using Free and Reduce. So I just wanted to make that kind of clarification. And then as far as the, if next time the vote is not to commit to it until September 11th, I think it's important for you to add a listening session at North High School. I think scheduling listening sessions at the two affected schools of people who are moving, you're going to be hearing two or three evenings of emotional reasons not to do it. And I think it's important for you to tap into the people who are really in support of it. I had a question earlier today about where, how long this has been discussed, and I found in my personal notes, just on my, on my computer, that we had information in 2012. I think Tim Leibham was at North High School with Dave Volk, and there was, I don't know, maybe 50 parents in that room, six years, five years ago, you know, that were very interested. And I do think that when you host, you know, at Sherman, you're going to get mostly Sherman people, and you hosted, Lake Shore, you're going to get mostly Lake Shore people. And if you are interested in a, in a balanced information from your constituents, then you would also be listening to the people that are very much in support of this.
Thank you. Yep, I, I kind of thought, yep, thank you. Anyone else? State name and address, please.
My name is Mark Goings, address is E17450, County Road V, Augusta. Speaking as, as a member of the Demo and Trends Committee for the last three years. And yes, we have talked about this a lot more this last year, but every year that I've been on that committee, we've discussed this. And I, I'm very aware that this is a very emotional thing for many family members, many alums, and so on. But one of the things I want to remind the board is that you're charged with offering a quality education to all students. And so to put this in a positive light, we have 11,000 students, give or take, in our school district. And eventually, they will either are in high school or be going to high school. This change that we're looking at, that, that the Demo and Trends has looked at, yes, we looked at, as Dr. Fager, as you all know, loves numbers, we looked at the numbers of this and that. We looked at the numbers of this and that. But ultimately, we're looking at a system, a recommendation that is proposed to enhance the educational experience for all the 11,000 students. One of the things that was the most important to me in thinking about this is there's the possibility of some class size changes happening. Also programs and opportunities for students. And so we as a board and as a district need to do a better job of talking about this as the, the opportunities that we have to enhance the education for all of our students. Because that's ultimately who we are educating. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for waiting.
My name is Dora Bydak and I live at 2202 Winsong Court. I keep hearing all of these references to consideration of all students and we need to do what's best for all students. And I, I hear that. I hear the message from those parents and students of, of North. But what I continue not to hear is consideration of those students then in the affected area because we are part of this process, obviously, those who are affected most. I ask what consideration you have given to, in particular, those students in middle school who would be asked to make this change after truly putting all of their time effort, their hard work, money into programs for a particular school and who frankly, I guess, I get, I'm really bothered by this continued statement of, the students will be fine. They'll get over it. It's the parents who are bothered. Well, I will tell you, this is absolutely not about me. I'm not an alumni. This has nothing to do with my allegiance to Memorial or any other school. I'm from Minnesota. To me, this might be like saying, well, I'm sorry that you've grown up a Packer fan your whole life, but now you have to be a Vikings fan. You have no choice in this. And perhaps that's, that sounds to be insensitive. It's just, you're totally changing the mindset of, of kids. I just, I, I would like you to take into consideration, in particular, those middle school students, and I'm wondering if you'd be willing to look at this timeline, this 2018-19 timeline. To me, and I don't mean to be dramatic, it just seems cruel to kids to do that to them. I, we've written, well, sorry, multiple letters to the, the school board. And I talked about a report from Psychology Today that indicates that a move, a forced move to, to students, in particular in their middle school age and adolescence, is particularly detrimental and difficult at that time. My kids are talking about this on the bus with their friends. They're talking about this at school with their friends. And I apologize for getting emotional because it is emotional to me, not for myself, but for my kids. And when I know they've given everything to work, to be with their friends, to, to be part of these teams and these organizations, that's, it's cruel to them to take them away from all that they've worked so hard for. I just plead with you to consider for those middle school kids in particular. I apologize for the emotion. Also, I just wonder what data there really is on what will actually happen if you move these students to North through, through boundary changes. Do you know for sure what classes are going to be taken? Will it make these courses, or the number of them equivalent? I will tell you, in our neighborhood, there are, the majority of students have another option. They have a parent who lives in the Memorial District of a divorced parent who lives there and will claim their address. There are individuals who are grandfathered in because of a sibling who already goes to, to Memorial. There are those who are planning to move. I just, I really do wonder how many students, and I'm not exaggerating this at all. I could name every single family and I won't do that to them. But there is all kinds of discussion on what the options are. And it's not because North isn't inferior school. Please understand that. I'm concerned about the transportation cost. What it, I had a neighbor estimate that it will cost $500 more a year to be going back and forth for families to attend activities to get their, their child. It's twice the distance to North as it is to Memorial from, from our home. I have a really hard time, I guess, believing the data as well, that it's going to be cost effective to transport students to, to North. The furthest northern part of the, this redistricting area, I'm sorry, of Memorial's district at this point, is still a mile further from North than it is from Memorial. We've done, we've printed numbers ourselves and it just doesn't add up to, to us. Maybe from those in the rural community, which is west, directly west and north, but certainly not from a large number of, of the areas that are in the affected part of the district. And finally, I just wonder what consideration you've made to divide elementaries. Sherman is currently divided. It makes sense perhaps that they would all go to North, but I don't like the idea of splitting Lake Shore then. These kids who have formed stable friendships from the time that they're young now are, are being split. And I, I just wonder if there is some consideration that we could make to keep elementaries together as well. I apologize. I maybe went more than four minutes of questions there.
That's fine. Thank you very much. Anyone else?
So I'm Jessica Smith, 304 Le Mans Lane, Eau Claire, Wisconsin. I spoke earlier. So is it okay if I speak again?
Quickly, yes.
Okay, quickly. I appreciate listening here and, again, coming late to the table, I guess. But as Commissioner Torres said, I mean, some of us, we're just in the community, not informed really unless something happens. So I think it's an obligation to the board to notify the people who are affected, particularly in the, the certain boundary changes. I thought Commissioner Luganbill's comments were really very good as far as, you know, maybe voting that there has to be a change, but then allowing community input. I was really kind of disturbed there for a little while when it sounded like you weren't going to even consider community input. That, that was a little bit frightening to me, but then coming back to the fact that, no, you, you need to listen to the community. I was happy to hear that. So yeah, I think my only question was, you know, how will you answer to the people who are directly affected and how will you consider their input? And will you consider that in, in moving forward, I guess? Just beyond just looking at the data that you've already looked at. Thank you.
Thank you for your input.
Hi, my name is Jeremy DeGolier and I am at 316 Le Mans Lane. So what I see is I see a board that made this decision 55 years ago. And I haven't seen the analysis that's been made, but it's, from the body language that I've seen, I've seen that the analysis was designed to be a reason to support the decision. And that's just what I see in body language. I haven't seen the analysis. I haven't seen anything else. But it's going to be a lot of years before this affects my son. But I moved here a year ago, actually to the day. Schools was a big factor in where I purchased the house, among other things. It is eight miles to North and it's only three to Memorial. And that is a big factor to me because I grew up in a rural area and I rode a bus morning and night each for an hour and 15 minutes. My son is not going to do that. And that's what the bus ride is going to be for our neighborhood to get to North. And so I, I hope you guys have considered what the unintended consequences are going to be and what human behavior is going to be, because whatever decision you make, the community is going to respond. And for me, it's a, a much greater incentive for me to, to move again because I don't want my son to have to ride that school bus morning and night. And granted, I'm lucky enough, I have the financial means and the time to do so. A lot of people aren't going to be able to. So I, I do hope that, that those are considerations. The community is very important. And I think how they feel definitely should be rolled into your decision, not just the numbers. Enrollment, I, I don't know why we're trying to equalize enrollment. I understand that the more students that go to North, there, there, there's possibly more classes and you get, you get more money, possibly, things like that. However, the sell side is going to continue to grow. And I have a feeling that, that we're all going to be doing this again in five years, six years. And I haven't, one question that I do have, and I, I don't, I haven't seen this yet, but I haven't seen any discussion on a new school. From what I see is I see two very old schools. One, I believe, North, or Memorial was built in the late 50s. North was built in the early 60s, I believe. And I, I see communities all over that are, are getting new, new schools, actually around us. I think El Tuna got a new school. Levestrum, I, I don't think their school's very old. And so I, I'm wondering, are there things, facilities wise, that, that we're doing to make Eau Claire more attractive, to get families in? And I, I don't know, you know, this might be a Band-Aid, but, you know, what, what can we do to make Eau Claire School District more attractive? So, thank you.
Thank you very much. I think we have a, I think we have a, a plan. So, oh, sorry.
Sorry about that.
That's all right.
I just wanted to offer, you know, build off of, I guess, Joe's comment when he said, the last thing he wants people to do is spend the summer wondering if this is or is not going to happen. And I know that if I was in the shoes of, of an affected area by this change or any other change, I just want to know. You know, tell me one way or the other so I can move on. And there'll be two people, different people will react differently. There's a phase of acceptance that everyone goes through differently. Some people will, no big deal, this is great. Some people will be, nah, not so sure, and other people will resist it no matter what. But the only way to get through people through those phases is to make this decision. So regardless of what that decision is, I would highly suggest you make it on the 19th so people can move on one way or the other. Couple other comments, I mean, I'm not, I'm not going to get real deep into this stuff, but, but there's emotion from both sides. But who's to say emotion from one side is more relevant or more important than emotion from the other side? Transportation costs come up, so forth. What about the transportation for those kids that used to have to find their own way to get from North over to Memorial? Nobody cared about the transportation then. You know, so there's, there's all these dynamics, there's all these emotional things that can come out from either side. And I emphasize with people that would go through a change like this. That's why I think the only thing to do is to stay anchored in facts, anchored in data, and anchored on what the mission and philosophy of this district is with regard to equity. If you do that, you can defend and, and, and help people get through this. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you for your input. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you. Good discussion. That takes us to our Literacy Within Supportive Learning Environments project. And who's up for that one? Dave? Lori? Jody? Hi, everyone. Mark?
So as they're getting set up for the report on the ELA review, I just want to remind the board that this is a project that has been underway for over a year. We began this review process as we looked at the growth of our students on our, on our formative assessments and also on our summative assessments. And we could see that we were making steady progress with math and having trouble making progress, the same kind of progress in reading and in our ELA results. So who's, are you going to start us off, Dave?
I'll get started and then I'll turn it over to the experts in the area. So just a, a little bit of background, as Dr. Hartebeck said. One of the areas that is an emphasis in the district is literacy with, within supporting learning environments and creating a culture that's interdepartmental so that literacy isn't thought of as a reading thing or an English thing or tied to a specific teacher or an area, but really interdepartmental tissue in the buildings. We're also reflecting that practice in the Teaching and Learning Department as the academic department working closely with both Student Services and Special Needs Areas to interweave this work into all, into all the business that we conduct so that literacy really is something that touches across the entire educational spectrum here. So you can see that we want to connect the work that we do as well to both board goals and our strategic, strategic plan and priorities. So the goal for this presentation tonight will be to describe supporting learning environments, touch on some of the detail, answer some questions you may have about those areas, define discipline literacy, learn about key findings from both external reviews and internal processes to identify strengths and areas of improvement. View the guiding principles of the Literacy Curriculum Project Plan and then preview the district's literacy plan, roll out, and then answer any questions about work that will be began in short order with staff development over the summer and then how it impacts 17, 18 instructional year. So with that said, I'd like to introduce Jody Hubbard. She's an expert from the Student Services area and will talk more about supporting learning environments and supporting all learners in our K-12 system.
Oh, that's okay. Hello. All right, so I'm going to just take a little bit of time and explain to you, when we talk about supportive learning environment, what we're talking about. And then I'm going to turn it over to our, our literacy coordinators. So what we know is that we have a, a board goal, you've defined a board goal for us, that says that the board and the Eau Claire Area School District staff will educate the whole child using multiple measures to assess academic achievement and social-emotional growth that are characteristic of successful adults. So what we know is that, you know, we can't control the experiences that kids have outside of school, but what we can control is our environment. We can control what that looks like for students in our classrooms and in our school buildings. And so therefore, it makes it our responsibility to take the time to create that learning environment in which all students can feel some success. They can learn in a place that's safe, that's predictable, that has a positive atmosphere, that includes not just the actual physical space and resources, but most importantly, that relationship that students develop with the adults and the other students in the building. So our PBIS, our Positive Behavior Intervention and Support Framework, guides us to create these types of systems for teaching expected behaviors, including the academic behaviors while embedding these supportive practices. And they include things like culture responsive practices, trauma-informed care, the nonviolent crisis intervention, and differentiated instruction. So while at the same time, we're trying to understand ACEs, the adverse childhood experiences and how these impact our students, we have to put all this together and then create that environment. So in the supportive learning environment, we're talking about working with the whole child and students are going to receive instruction that's supportive to their academic and their social-emotional needs. Within that environment, students are equipped with soft skills. So things like being able to learn about active listening, organizational skills, self-advocacy, decision-making, and problem-solving. And so the focus is on learning content, but it's also just as important to teach students how to learn. And so in this critical work that we're going to be taking on in this next year, we know that we need to build the environment so that when the literacy instruction is provided, students are supported. So we're going to take a look at, these five beliefs were what were identified as being critical to guide us through this journey. So beginning with the belief is that it's a collective responsibility for all staff in preschool through 12th grade to work together on this. We know the importance of having high expectations and our, the Common Core state standards have set those for us. They're high, they're clear, they're consistent for all students, and we know that's important. We also know how important culture responsive practices are, and we've done a lot of work on that as a district this year in several, in all of our buildings and in several other locations. And so when we look at what will this look like next year with literacy, it's about sprinkling or embedding these practices into the literacy work so all students can see themselves reflected in that environment. Because we know that providing that culture responsive environment in the classroom is of paramount importance to building that bridge between home culture and school culture. And when we talk about culture and being culture responsive, we're talking about that broad diversity of race. We're talking about language, gender, socioeconomic status. And that our end goal is to prepare, prepare all students for that multicultural world outside of our building. So the other thing I touched on a little bit already is that student relationship piece and how critical that is so that students can be engaged in the and how critical that is, so that students can be engaged in the learning. And finally, the fifth belief is that family and community engagement, and how critical this process is, and that it's going to be communicated, as well as, besides the process itself, but then the benchmarks of the progress that we're making, and a feedback loop, so.
Could I ask a question about the family and community one?
Yes.
The, I was really excited to learn about the after-school program with some parents at one of our elementary schools. Within this framework, is that something that we hope to expand to other elementary schools, to parents?
Do you want to talk about that? So I think what you're talking about is the language classes that we have for families, literacy classes.
Right.
Yes. So that's been an, a special project at one of our schools. At another elementary school, we've had a project where, in the summer, where parents could come in and learn how to work with their students to improve literacy. At another school, parent conferences are structured around kind of having group parent conferences, so that parents understand what students, what the expectations are for student learning and how to support that student learning. So each school has, will probably develop their own approach to that.
Moving forward.
Yes, moving forward, yeah, there'll be more and more, because what we hear in our family surveys is that parents want to know, not necessarily how to instruct their students, but how to support that instruction.
I had a comment too, Jody. These are very aligned to special education, IEPs, same kind of collective, I mean, these are the same beliefs that, that are brought forth with access and special education, right?
Yeah.
I mean, because I've seen these, that's good, yeah, thanks. Commissioner Harder, sorry?
I'm on the LEAP Committee, which is Learning Environments and Partnerships. And so we have a, kind of a particular take on what learning environments means there. I'm by no means an expert, but I have my own kind of take that I've absorbed on what, what it means. It doesn't, my, my sort of personal definition of it doesn't totally align with this. Is it, do you, do you see, I guess I wanted you to comment on that briefly, if that particular term, learning environments, has, is used in a specific way here, or is it just kind of a generic term?
When we talked about defining what a supportive learning environment was, we started with the definition of if we're going to teach to the whole child, what does that look like? And so if you look at what best practices says, whether you're talking about educational practices, or you're talking about mental health support, when we talk about environment, we're not just talking about physical space, you're talking about all of those practices you put into place to support the child so they can be successful. So that's how we define that supportive learning environment. It came out of a work group that we've had while ongoing the culture responsive practices this entire school year, but then we kind of combined groups last month. Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Dr. Hardabek?
And if you refer to the graphic that we gave you, the chart, I think you'll see some of those alignments.
Okay. All right.
Okay, Jody helped us clarify what we are referring to as supportive learning environments. I want to take just a moment and talk about what, how we came to the, the term, use the term literacy, rather than English Language Arts, which is kind of where this journey started for the, the lead team. As we looked at the focus on literacy skills across the curriculum, we found a lot of research about literacy in multiple disciplines and across content areas. So we wanted to share this quote from Sharaki Holly, who is the author of a couple of books that, that has really helped guide the culturally responsive practices, work that we've done in the district this year, who states that having strong literacy skills, and by those we are referring to reading, writing, speaking, listening, those literacy skills are gatekeeper to success in almost all academic subjects. All academic subjects require reading of some type, it might be reading charts, or graphs, or manuals, or music, but those are literacy skills as well. And if we consider those literacy skills as a gatekeeper to success, we know that in this district, it is our firm belief that all students should have equitable access to the keys to those gates. And so we wanted to expand this beyond just English Language Arts, and really focus on what students need to be literate in all content areas. As students progress through the system, starting from pre-K years, once they start to engage in multiple areas of content, multiple disciplines, they need to be aware of the fact that scientists write and read differently than historians, and historians write and read differently than novelists and poets. And so by including all content areas and teachers of all disciplines, we can look to those content experts to guide students in how to access those literacy skills that are particular to that discipline, including vocabulary and style and content of writing. This is, Dr. Hardabek reminded me, reminded us, as did Dave Oldenburg, that this is a process that's been ongoing. This journey started, in its most recent incarnation, with the District System Assistant and the Strategic Plan, both of which call for a pre-K-12 vertically and horizontally-articulated academic program. And based on that, the focus for this, the last probably 12 months, maybe 14, was to take a look, a close look at the ELA program in the district, which included an external review of the district's ELA program by Hanover Research. And based on the feedback and recommendations of that external review, and an internal review of our data and our system and our curriculum documents, the ELA lead team and the culturally responsive lead team have now merged to create some recommendations and a literacy plan for the district that would involve pre-K-12 ELA, reading, writing, speaking, and listening, as well as content areas that, that would approach or, or access this literacy information.
Can I ask a question?
Yes. Thank you.
It's just me. Because our speech paths are experts within that speaking and listening and oral language area, have they been involved in this process at all?
Up until this point, we are currently formulating the team, and we do have coordinator that's involved in that. As you'll see, that we, we've divided this into phases, and speech and language, or speech, reading, speaking and listening will be part of the Phase Three, and so I anticipate that that would continue to grow as we move into that area as well. But there will be, and you'll see there's a plan for involving all stakeholders within the district, not just those serving on the team. Okay?
I have a question.
Yes.
I think I know what you mean by vertically and horizontally in the program, but could you explain that?
Yes, I will. I am going to get to that right on this next slide. So if I don't do it adequately in a moment, we'll come back to that. Thank you. This is, this slide just explains what the charge of Hanover Research was, and what we asked them to do for our district. And that is to look at the curriculum's current state, the intended curriculum, what we have in our documents, and the enacted curriculum, what is actually transpiring when teachers are in front of students in the classroom. Then compare that to what we know from research and what we know from our vision, mission, and goals, in terms of what we would like the curriculum's ideal state to be, and then come up with recommendations about how ECSD can bridge the gap between each state. And this is where they did look at horizontal alignment, vertical alignment, and Common Core State Standard alignment. So when we refer to horizontal alignment, we're looking at how well students' experiences align from classroom to classroom and from building to building. So if I'm a fourth grade teacher, or, excuse me, if I have a fourth grade student of teacher A at Robbins Elementary, I should be getting a similar experience and access to the same content as a fourth grade student of teacher B at Locust Lane. Okay? So that's horizontal alignment. Vertical alignment is how well our curriculum prepares students as they advance through grade levels. So how well does our pre-K curriculum prepare students for kindergarten? How well does fifth grade prepare students for sixth grade? And how well is that aligned as they move up through the, the system? And then the final one is how well is our curriculum aligned to the Common Core State Standards? So that was the charge for Hanover Research. The recommendations that they came back with really fell into five categories, and these are not sequential, nor are they prioritized, they're simply five recommendations that they had. The first was to look at aligning this literacy curriculum. We found that we had fairly good horizontal alignment, particularly within buildings, with some variation between buildings. When we had shared resources and curriculum materials, that alignment was much closer than in high school, where we didn't have, say, a, an English textbook that was used consistently across the district. Vertical alignment was less consistent, and we found particularly as students moved between fifth and sixth grades and eighth and ninth grades, frequently we would, we would have a, a separate system or a different vocabulary or terminology that we were using to teach. And so we, we found that those tended to be some gaps in our vertical alignment. And in terms of Common Core State Standards alignment, much of the, the curriculum documents were created prior to the adoption of Common Core, and so there was quite a bit of inconsistency on how well we aligned to Common Core State Standards as well. So we have some work that we can do to align in all three of those areas, and that was their first suggestion. They also suggested creating a literacy resource center, where teachers can have access to strong practices, instructional strategies that we know are effective for students of all abilities and, and of all needs. So we are looking at what a platform might be to house that, and how we might do that resource sharing. We want to increase knowledge sharing among all the stakeholders, that teachers and principals and support staff all are aware of what the standards are and how best to help students to reach those standards.
If I could just, as you talk about creating a literacy resource center, knowledge sharing, more alignment with partners and stakeholders?
Yes.
I think right away about Literacy Chippewa Valley, because I know they're completely in kind of flux right now and redesigning some things. So that, is that something, are, are they at the table right now as a community partner who could actually be a, a partner within our system, or us helping them, or vice versa?
So Joe, I'm, I'm on the board of Chippewa Literacy, and you're right, they are in a bit of a flux right now, in terms of programming. So, right now, they support the family program at Putnam. They support some of our family literacy programs, but I'm thinking that some of those programs will be reorganized for the coming year.
So that might be something that we look at, building those and working with them as they continue that process. Okay. Improve administrative focus. We have worked with principals and the lead team and directors in the district, and looked at this being a focus of professional development and some of the learning and doing that's taking place with principals and literacy coaches throughout the district, because we know that it does touch all students in all content areas. And then the last recommendation, and this is based on interviews and surveys of over 400 teachers in the district and educators, not just teachers, but that, that desire for professional development around literacy, and how best to help all students reach those literacy goals. So we have a, a strong professional development component to this as well. So, one of the things that we built into this project plan is that because we are striving for alignment pre-K-12 and across content areas, we were frequently asked, where are you going to start? Are you going to start with middle school, are you going to start with high school? And rather than piecemeal that, we do want to do this to increase the alignment by working with all grade levels at the same time. We have this wonderful desire to do everything, but what we realize is we can't do it all at once. So we have divided this progress, process into three different phases. The first phase, and this will be the 2017-18 school year, is to look at the writing and language standards. And that is two sections of the Common Core State Standards for English Language Arts and literacy in all subject areas. There are also components of the Wisconsin Model Early Learning Standards and the Common Core Essential Elements that deal with writing and language. So we'll choose to focus on that in Year One. And then in subsequent phases, which we have roughly planned out for, for the next two years, we're thinking that each could be done in a year. Hopefully, Phase Two will be reading, and Phase Three will be that speaking and, those speaking and listening standards.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
If I would look at that developmentally from my lens, so you have to help me, I would developmentally think speaking and listening comes first, developmentally. So why was that Phase Three and not Phase One?
Okay. What we have tried to explain the, the thinking of the, the lead team in terms of why start with writing and language, is because when Hanover Research did the, this, the assessment of the ELA program, they came back saying that our strongest area of alignment is in writing. And we wanted to start with a strength, something where we had some foundation already. We have a, a writing program in the elementary schools that is in its second, first, second year of full implementation. It is grounded in research, and a lot of the research that supports the writer's workshop model in elementary is the same, supports those same models for teaching adolescents to write effectively. So we chose to start with writing and language because we felt that it was an area where we had something, some, something to build on, we had some successes, and we could use that to help strengthen our process as we work with a very large team on some very complicated decisions, and then move into reading and speaking and listening. So that was the explanation for the choice of starting with writing. Okay? All right. So this does involve a significant commitment to professional development, and we've worked again with principals and literacy and instructional coaches to get their commitment that we can work with them for, for professional development days next year. Those, half of those days will involve some learning together, so that the literacy team that begins the work this summer will then be responsible for communicating that back to their buildings, so that it's not just the team that's learning about these essential elements of literacy and instructional practices, but that all stakeholders, all teachers, support staff, principals, and, and people in instructional positions will also have an understanding of the process that they've gone through. So some of the universal learning that we have planned for next year with these professional development days would be why it's important to have a guaranteed and viable curriculum, and what does that mean, and what does that look like? What does it mean to have a guaranteed curriculum? What, where are we loose and where are we tight? And what does it mean to have a viable curriculum? One that can be sustained and be taught in the time that we have with our students. We'll talk about what literacy in all subject areas looks like, and the difference between disciplinary literacy and content literacy. We will develop some district beliefs about writing and language that are grounded in practices and research. And then within that, we still want to maintain and support collaboration that's going to be happening within those PLCs. We don't want to disrupt the work that's already going on, but perhaps we can raise some questions that can enhance the work that those district, district, grade level, course level teams are already doing in their PLCs.
Can I ask a question? With the vertical alignment, which is what you're still needing to work on, right, between areas, that vertical alignment will really dictate what that curriculum will look like per grade level, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So that will probably have to be firmed up first?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's the process that'll be starting this summer.
I have a question. When you're working on literacy in all subject areas, is the theory that when you focus that way in a particular subject area, then the teacher has just kind of a different orientation toward the way they teach their subject matter? Is that kind of the way you think about it?
It doesn't necessarily mean changing the way that a teacher approaches subject matter, but really kind of taking a critical look at what we ask students to do in that content area. So part of the professional development is, is asking teachers to self-assess, what type of reading do I ask students to do in science, in social studies? What types of skills do students need in order to read music, or to read maps, or charts? How do they write or compose those documents? And particularly, when we look at, at language, what type of vocabulary is necessary to understand that content? So we're not, and this is something we've had to reiterate with teachers in content areas, we're not asking them to change their curriculum. This literacy work is not going to necessitate, it's not going to necessarily mean that, that they are changing their curriculum or what they teach, but it does ask them to take a critical look at how they are helping students develop a literacy in their content area.
Can I ask a question?
Does that answer? Okay.
Following up on your, on your commentary, if you're not looking for a change in that curriculum... Following up on your commentary, if you're not looking for a change in that curriculum, I wonder how you are going to be controlling for what we know as a hidden curriculum? How are you going to tie that to the personal teachers, the personal process that each teacher goes through to identify their own biases? When they become aware of their own biases, then that will hopefully generate some kind of curriculum change, right?
I want to clarify that we are looking at revising the curriculum for English Language Arts. That is going to be an important part of the process, strengthening in some cases. What we did want to clarify, though, is that the literacy team is not going to go to the math department and say, you need to teach differently and you need to teach other content. Okay? So we're not dictating because the standards that we're looking at are literacy standards, not math standards for this project. In terms of the hidden curriculum, this is where we do look, we do want to look at how that whole child approach fits in with our teaching of literacy. Because part of the work of the culturally responsive practices this year has been asking our staff to look at our implicit biases, to look at the language that we use, to look at the instructional strategies that we use, and to examine those to see if there are some culturally biased practices that we have in our schools, if there's some institutional biases that we have in our schools. And we will continue to do that work, not necessarily changing the curriculum, but working with teachers to examine their practices, their attitudes, their beliefs, and strengthening practices that we know are best for all students.
Thank you. That was my question.
Okay. Okay. All right. Okay. So last slide, it really comes down to what are we hoping to see? What will be the outcome of this project? What are the deliverables that we will hopefully be able to come back to the board and say, here's what we have done as a part of this literacy project? We want to make sure that the district's literacy curriculum will provide all students with an equitable opportunity to learn essential standards and skills. We can't teach them all, but we can help identify what those essential standards are for each grade level that will prepare them for the subsequent grade level, which will prepare them for post-secondary college and career success. We also want to make sure that curriculum documents are created by educators that represent all content areas, all grade levels, and all student groups. We're not going to create one universal curriculum and later come back and create a curriculum for the gifted and talented students, or later come back and create a different curriculum for the special education students. We're going to create a universal curriculum that includes supportive learning environments so that all students can access the same content and the same standards at a high level of rigor. That group of educators will also be charged with trying to identify and eliminate any gaps, reduce redundancies, and make connections across grade levels and content areas. Some of those things are already in place, but we do have some gaps and some redundancies that we can improve. And finally, we want to make sure that we're providing a structured support for all students as they progress towards mastery of literacy standards in this district.
Thank you.
I appreciate you asking questions as we go because sometimes those thoughts come up. Before I open it up to questions, once again, I do want to acknowledge that while there are a couple of us speaking here tonight, we are representing a lead team of principals, directors, coordinators, and particularly Lori House and Brianna Smith, who is not here tonight, have been instrumental in helping put this information together for you.
Thank you very much. Does anyone else have any more questions? No? Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you for your time and your patience.
Lori? Yeah, sure.
I just have two things to add. One is in regards to, Joe, your question about the resource sharing center. That recommendation also comes out of input from our teachers saying they need help finding resources because there are several places that they currently can find resources. And so the goal of that would be to really communicate in a succinct way where to find those equitable resources so that, to improve that access. So that's part of that resource sharing piece. And then Chris, I just want to add to one of your questions that you had about why starting with writing. Within the language standards of the Common Core standards, one of the standards speaks to oral language activities. And so building that oral language with our students through writing that first year, we of course will do that speaking to help generate that oral language, but it'll be applied to their writing that first year. So that will really be throughout the whole process.
Very nice. Anybody else have questions? Eric, I got to quote you. My first year on the board, I never turned mine off either. Do you have something to say to us?
I do. I do. I believe this topic is very relevant to the bigger question about systematic change. I know that we talk a lot about the right language and all that, but I have specific situation, where does this situation fits in and how does the district systematically address issue like that? For example, we want to promote literacy, but if I am a kid who reads everything but things that are relevant to my understanding or interest me, I don't read as much because they're not interested to me. So I'm not being cultivated enough. One way to look at that is, okay, Eau Claire School District has about 17% of people of color. What kind of material do we have for students other than normal Caucasian students to read? Are we cultivating all the students' reading, writing, and interest? Systematically, what are we doing to address this issue so that they are horizontally addressed across the board? And we look at resource center, we look at ideas of relevant culturally responsive teaching, we look at professional development. I like to see systematically, institutionally, what are we doing to address that issue?
Well, one thing I'd respond to that, your point, would be to talk about, one of the goals of the project would be to increase classroom libraries in our classrooms. And by doing that, really taking a careful look at what we currently have in our classrooms and do students of color or students, you know, from a variety of backgrounds, see themselves in the books that they see in their classrooms. And so that would be one of the goals of the project is to take a look at our classroom literature, our literature that we use during instruction every day, posters on our walls, language in our buildings, in a way to help all students feel like they're a part of their school community. And so to take a look at our classroom resources and our school resources would be one step towards helping all students feel inclusive in our buildings.
Follow-up question again.
Okay.
Do we have the resource and the consistency so we can address the horizontal need? Do we have the resource allocate for that? Do we have a template that school building will follow and not just leaving to the mercy of the individual to be creative?
Okay. So when you say resources, are you talking about budgetary resources or curriculum documents that would help communicate what the curriculum, the expected curriculum, and those things that we want to be equitable across all buildings?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So I can speak to the curriculum documents themselves. In our department this year in academic services, we've worked on creating a template that would be used consistently across the district and all the curriculum work that we do, beginning with this project, of course, but that would share what the expectations that we have for things that would happen in classrooms. So the types of instructional practices that teachers are using to include all students and give all students a voice, the types of resources that we'd have available in classrooms, so the type of books and other classroom materials. It would also help us think about our students in our classrooms with disabilities, students who are gifted, and how are we going to differentiate and provide education to all levels of learners and all types of learners? That curriculum document would also include learning targets so that we're being consistent in across, so we talked about horizontal, so across all second grade classrooms from building to building, that we're being consistent about our expectations for students. It would also note the standards that we're meeting through our instruction. Do you want to add anything else?
Okay. All right. And I would add, as a reformed English teacher, I would say, talking about the selection of content, of materials, of books that our students access is near and dear to my heart. And I think that is one of the reasons why we want to make sure that the culturally responsive practices work that we've started this year continues to be a part of this work going forward. I always talk to my students in terms of the fact that the information, the literature we read, is a window and a mirror. We see ourselves and our own experiences reflected in that, but it's also a window into other people's experiences. And I know, having attended some of the culturally responsive practices training this year, there are a lot of districts that say, you know, we have a very small minority population. We need to have a very small piece of multicultural literature in our classroom, for example. And the argument is made, when we have a fairly homogeneous district, when we have a fairly homogeneous student population, it is as if not more important that we provide those windows into other people's experiences. So not only can our students see themselves, that all students can see themselves somewhere reflected in the signs that we have on our walls and the pictures that we have on our websites and the literature we read in our classrooms, but also that they can get a window into other people's experiences. We do have some templates on when it comes time to adopt resources. They give us very clear indicators of how to rate and rank and evaluate potential resources. And one of the things that is ranked and rated in that resource review process is how does this reflect our students and the diversity of our students' experiences? How does this expose our students to a diverse world that they're going to be entering once they leave Eau Claire, Wisconsin? I'm getting closer to your question somewhat.
Thank you for saying that because that was going to be my question.
Perhaps if I may, an interesting exercise to begin, maybe you already have a plan, but would be to ask all the teachers, you know, in one grade level, to do an inventory of resources they already have right now and go through that process of checking for bias in all the books that are made available to children in their own classrooms. So they don't go by, you know, general statistics or studies done by third parties, but from the resources that are made available in their classroom through their intervention, right?
I just want to add here, too, Eric will be gone from a few board meetings because he is going to take students from the university. Do you want to explain what you'll be doing when you're gone so that, I mean, it's kind of appropriate to have that quickly, but it's pretty exciting that we have a board member doing this, so I just want him to share.
I'm married to a preacher, so I'm going to hold my watch here. Time counts. I will just be observing successful experiences in global learning in a third-world country and trying to identify them, to learn from them and with them as we are immersed. I can say more, but we distract him.
But I'm glad you could share that so that, I mean, you'll have lots of neat information to share with us, so that's good. Charles, did you have another question? Mary Ann has something to say.
One thing I wanted to add. You talked about the systematic instruction and overcoming our biases. We find that sometimes teachers can make assumptions about what students already know and bring to the classroom, particularly in content areas like science, social studies, math. So one of the strategies is to specifically teach the vocabulary that goes with a particular subject and how words are used in that particular subject. And that is a way of overcoming those differences and expanding that awareness.
Thanks, anyone? Anybody else have anything to add?
Could I just add one more very quick?
Yes. Yes.
The reason I'm pushing for this whole idea so much is that we have a core value that we said we want to adhere to. And those core values include things like respect, diversity, compassion, and justice. To begin to make meaningful of those core values, it starts with all of us. The people that make decisions, all the way to the people who teach and be with kids every day. If we truly want to stick to our core value, I challenge all of us to be sincere about what we do, and it begins with systematic change. I can't say enough, but that's my main reason for asking the questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Vu. Anyone else?
Oh, I was just going to tell you a quick story because I sit on the Public Schools Foundation ex officio, and I serve on a committee that gives grant money to teachers. And one year, a teacher asked for books. Well, normally, we turn those down because we think it should be purchased by the district, and why should that be an extra thing? But the way she explained it was, I have students who are new English speakers, and they need to have easy enough books that are more interesting. And the stories, you know, if you're reading Jane and John Doe or whoever, that's not very interesting. So we awarded the books to her. And I thought, why aren't more people asking for those things?
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Harder?
Well, I know it's late. I just want to say briefly that this is really, I find this to be a really pretty interesting initiative, and I really like the idea of cross-disciplinary literacy. I think that's really a compelling notion. And I appreciate your presentation, going through it and explaining to us a little bit more. I would ask, you know, coming from, as Chair of the Budget Committee, interested to know, it may not be at hand, and I don't know how easy it would be to do, but I would be very interested to see some kind of analysis of cost of this projected out. I know it's a multi-year program, and some of the things that are happening in near term are maybe a little easier to project than things that are happening at far term. To be clear, I'm not asking for this right now because it is late, but it would be great to see it in some future board meeting, perhaps.
Well, Erin, I'm glad you brought that up because I was going to come forth and maybe make a pitch for the academic services budget. So when you see the budget come across, budget setting and budget priorities, I'm hoping that this explanation will help support maybe the little bit of more largesse you might find in the teaching and learning academic services budget. We budgeted about $125,000 ballpark for this work for '17, '18. A large part of that goes to, right, acquire both supplies that would support this work and work with instructors both over the summer and outside the traditional school day because we want the teacher voice to be part of this, right? That's the most essential part of the work that we're going to do, which supports some of the comments that Charles made, that have teachers around the table and have them experience professional development as we walk through this journey.
That's year one. Year one, and, you know, obviously it would have some potential costs going forward, too. Again, not for now, but it would be interesting to see if it's available.
I appreciate that budget approval tonight, so thank you for that.
Last question. Will the vertical alignment be done before resources and supplies and curriculums and stuff will be purchased?
Yes and yes. So we-
Because that drives it.
As the work rolls out and there's critical resources that can be acquired, we would do them in concert. We wouldn't do one to get the other, but the- We wouldn't do one to get the other, but the work of the vertical alignment will inform.
That's what I, yeah.
Right. But maybe we, you know, we're, we're not completely done with the cherry on top and then we say, "Then we go and buy things." All right.
Anyone else? Thank you very much. That takes us to this really important, I bet Kate, that's why you're here, as we're into these resolutions, that we're trying to build a voice from the board relative to things that affect not just us, but our community. I'll let Jo kind of lead us through these because when we talked about doing these resolutions, you all have them in front of you. So, the resolution on leading on LED bill, does anyone have any questions about it? That actually was brought to mind by someone in the audience who is here tonight, and we thought it was important enough to maybe bring it towards, to the board as a resolution. And you've all had these ahead of time, so are there any questions? Anyone from, so, what we would like to do then is to vote on these, this one next time at the board meeting and have everyone sign them that night. And we would, I, I had a conversation with Dana Wachs at a recent town hall meeting about not hearing back when we do these resolutions from people. And so, we decided, or I'm, I'm saying to the board, is that we're going to try to blanket it more and offer the resolutions to the districts within the Chippewa Valley so that they can make these resolutions their own as well. Because what Dana did tell me was that the more districts that submit the resolutions, the bigger voice we do have. So, everybody okay about bringing this one forward for a vote next time? Okay? Any questions? No? So, then the next one, is the resolution on voucher transparency bill? That right now is Senate Bill, I don't know if Patty's going to pull it up. I don't remember the numbers on it. 267, yep, and Senate Bill 183. And that one, just, everybody okay with that one, is signing it as all board members? Okay, very good. And the last one, you don't have to get it because there's, huh? And the last one is a resolution opposing the anti-local control school referendum restricting legislation. So, those are all listed underneath. Is everyone okay to bring that forward to pass next time and have all board members sign?
There's a word left out in there. I think it's the last paragraph. Oh, it's fixed on that. Listen.
Yeah, we read them through in policy. Yep, okay. All right.
Area was left out.
Okay. So, those will all be brought back and I, I, board members need to stick around after the board meeting then to sign them so that we can get them out right away. Okay. That gives us to a request for future agenda items? Nope. Then, somebody like to move adjournment? So, I got Charles. Move second. Commissioner Fager, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Before anybody leaves, who's the next on the agenda setting? So, we need to set a date for that with Marianne, Patty, me, and Jo before you leave. I also want board members to know that, huh?
And me.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Sorry.
I'm short now.
No, that's okay. Remember to mention, I, I need to tell the board that we have that open seat due to Jennifer's taking a job out of state. They're due the June 14th at 4:00 PM, so if you have any Facebook or anything that you can get that message out on, we'd appreciate that to get the word out. Not that, that we have a, not that anybody in the audience wants to do that, but, so. Again, thank you, everybody.
This program was brought to you by a cooperation between Newsworks and the Eau Claire Area School Board. Newsworks is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us via phone at 715-839-5067 or online at valleymediaworks.org.